Good morning, good morning, good morning. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are being broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Matels?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum president. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today and the blessings of life and the blessings on this great city. God, we stand here today in all of your greatness. We thank you for your son, Jesus. We thank you for providing the leadership in this city and this council and the mayor and his administration. And God, we pray for wisdom today and the very important decisions they'll be making that will affect this community. Thank you for your protection during the recent storms and rain and pray that you'll continue to provide that care for us in the days ahead. We love you and thank you and ask your blessings on us today. And we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on February the 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
That you did well.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify the payments of accounts for the week of February the 21st through the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We have unfinished business. We have three items. In fact, we basically have two. The first one is authorizing conveyance of property located in the 700 block of the Agricola Drive. This is Frankie Patton has offered $150 for the property. And this ordinance was read last, presented last week for first reading, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next ordinance is authorizing a flood damage prevention ordinance to bring the city into compliance with federal law and regulation concerning the flood control regulation. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The last item, there's no action that's necessary regarding the resolution of abatement of nuisance as property on 802 Avenue A in District 3. It has been abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering the abatement of nuisance on property at 1158 Litchfield Avenue in District 1. The last known owner is Samuel L. Wyatt. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come and give your name and address.
My name is Samuel Wyatt. I'm the owner of that property. And letter I received from this council, I didn't get it in the same timeframe because the post office have two different times put my mail in the wrong boxes. And it was months later even when I did receive it. I came and talked to Mr. Harbison concerning that last year. But in the same time, I've been working on the building and some of the things that I had replaced siding in the front from what was a lot of holes and things in it. Anyway, it was some siding I had and it didn't turn out the best or nothing because the sun cooked it and it kind of didn't make it look so good. So I'm continuing to work on that property and replace it with tin and stuff like that in the front and cover the holes in the back and paint it and other things. I've been working on it. And the honest reason, another reason I'm not completely finished with because of the weather, the rain is, is kind of holding me up. So I'm trying to my best to make that property look decent for the community. I am working at it.
Okay. Do you think, how long do you think this will take you? How much time do you want us to give you? The most we can do right now is 30 days.
I'll sell it for 30 days. See, you say that's the most you can give me, so.
Well, that's, that's the starting, that's the starting point. And if there's an improvement, then we'll, we'll extend it. But first of all, we want to get you 30 days to get you where, get you really started finishing what you're doing.
Well, let me say this, and I don't want to keep a lot of the council time. Since I received the letter from the council to be here today, I've been working at it even since then. But the weather, you know, kind of hindered me. I worked on it all weekend and things like that. So it ain't 'cause I'm not working at it. And you know, I'm not putting him on the spot, but he, he's good about trying to work with me and things like that. It's not 'cause I'm not trying. I'm really working at it. You can come by there and look at it for yourself.
Yeah, well, we'll just, what I'll do is recommend 30 days and then as, you know, if you need to come back again, then you know, we'll just see where we go from there.
I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. I'm certainly not opposed to extending this process for 30 days. And I understand the situation that Sammy has been in. Met him out there a couple of times. We filed our case in April of last year, and he did take out a building permit in August. This is, just to put everything in perspective, this building used to house the, the original East Gaston Sporting Goods for you guys that have grown up in Gaston. And it was there until maybe a little over 25 years ago when it moved to its current location off George Wallace Drive. Sammy bought this building as an investment. It is one of the buildings that will eventually come down once 759 is extended and, and becomes adjoining to 278 and 431. It, it's, it's on the mound.
It's in the pathway.
It's in the blue. It's gonna go. And, and I'm sure what Sammy wants to do is put as little as required. And I certainly understand that. And the only thing I've ever asked him to do, and I would ask him here today, is just finish the outside of the building. I understand that most likely it's never going to become a viable business again. And I understand he wants to protect his investment, and we certainly wouldn't want to rob him of that opportunity. So, so I would, I would ask that the council table it for 30 days. But he does understand that the outside of that building does need to be completed during that time. Thank you.
Okay. Which are Don L. Thompson III, Linda L. Thompson, Joan Dickerson Leach, William Dickerson Leach, Sarah Wilder, and Joan Leach Hicks being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a, an abandoned commercial building on First Avenue. I think most of you will recognize the building in the picture. We filed our case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. I have had a conversation with, with Wayne Copeland, who is handling the local affairs of the owner and his family. And I talked with a local landlord yesterday who's lining up some demolition. But I'm asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance today, and hopefully the owner will take care of the demolition during the next few weeks and City Hall has to invest in more parks.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 921 Avenue F in District 3. The estate of Lorene Harold, Cousa Federal Saving and Loan, Laurie Jean Burton, Dexter Duane Harold, Vincent O'Neil Harold, and Stanley Jerome Harold being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Your name and address.
My name is Dexter Harold. My address is 307 Harden Circle. The concern in that dress is 921 Avenue F. I'd just like to, first of all, thank the council for the time that they gave me before. There hasn't been a lot done on this property, and I know that. But if you could just give me 30 days to, to get the process moving. It, it happens at a bad time. I guess we get this letter when, when the weather is finally about to break and we're able to get out and do some, do some things to it. But I'm really at the mercy of the council, and I really thank you for the time that you have, have given me to get this done. But we really want to try to salvage this property. We have an interest in it. We do have an interest in it, even though it may not seem like it, we do. So we want to at least get the process going and get the ball rolling on it and have that opportunity. When I leave here, if, if it's okay, I'll go up and, and get a permit and see if I got, if I can secure some contractors to go up and get something done on the, on the exterior of the building to get it, to get it up to par. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who speak in favor?
Madam President, I had a conversation with Councilman Worthy prior to pre-council and understand he's gonna ask for 30 days to, to allow Mr. Harold to work on the property. We're certainly not opposed to that. I would just ask, again, in public, that everything be done on the outside, needs to be done, just to, for the sake of the neighbors. And we would not oppose that. Just for the record, we filed a case in June. There are no active permits to improve, and there have been no improvements. But we would certainly go along with giving Mr. Harold 30 days to try to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Harold, was that the home place?
Yes, sir.
Is that the home place?
Yes, sir.
I'd been up there. Me and your dad worked together for years.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask to give 30 days, please. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance of an accessory building on property located at 1351 Forest Avenue in District 3. Ann Harris and Mike Teleferro being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a garage department. This would be the, the last standing residential property in this entire block. We've removed everything else in the last couple of years. We filed a case in June. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
That's the one need to deal with.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt, please.
Are there any discussion?
Yes. Now, this is one that we need to be able to put up on the monitor or something where people could see it. And that's why we need a new City Hall Mayor, so we may be do that.
He's trying to, he's trying to take, steal my thunder.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 3610 Georgia Avenue in District 6. And this is David W. Waits being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. And I would like to inform the council that the owner wishes at some point to convey this property to the city. We already have the case filed. As you can see, the house needs to be removed, and I'd like to get a resolution today to go ahead and do that.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And our next, we have items 14 through 18, and these are our final public hearings, our resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. And this is for demolition work that has already been performed, and we have five locations. One is 604 Blight Street, District 2, at $2,841.40. State of Alabama, Billy Wise, Micah Kason, and Towana Kason. 1010 Slusher Avenue, District 2, $3,316.40. Runny Pollak, subject to a mortgage in favor of Financial Service Company of Alabama. Carlos Tello, State of Alabama. And we have 803 Rogers Street, District 3, $2,741.40. This is Morris III, the estate of Coral L. Brown, Morris, in care of Morris Brown III, William Brown, and Coral Lee Brown in care of Morris Brown III. We have 809 Wawanna Street, District 3, at $3,666.40. And this is State of Alabama, redemption right of Florence Hardy, Chapman Hardy, and their heirs if deceased. And our last one is 1001 Spruce Street, District 5, $3,441.40. And this is the State of Alabama, the right of redemption of Johnny L. Williams and his or her heirs if deceased. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all five resolutions.
Our last item is awarding a bid number 3429 for Raymond Hill Community Center Reroofing Project. The city engineer recommended awarding the bid to Midwestern Commercial Roofers and Company, and the amount is $82,120. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
There's no new business, department reports, committees, boards.
Madam President, the mayor asked me to just give a brief synopsis of a recent nuisance sweep that my department has been involved in, primarily in the Alabama city area, which would include most of District 6, including Walnut Park and Oak Park community. During, during the last few weeks, we have generated 250 nuisance cases involving trash and debris, discarded appliances and such. We also have 96 abandoned vehicles that we have identified and notified the property owners of. And just want to let the, the president and the council know that we are now moving into District 1 to, to include most everything south of East Broad, almost to 431. And so during the next few months, we'll be continuing these sweeps until we complete the entire city. It's gonna generate a lot of phone calls to, to you guys, and want you to know that upfront. And we're looking at every lot vacant or occupied. And we're notifying the tenants for rental property, which 42% of all of our dwelling units in Gaston are now rental. We're notifying the renters, and we're notifying landlords, and we're notifying owner occupied dwellings and properties which have violations. So if you have any comments or requests during the next few months, if you'll let me know, I'll make sure that, that those are included in the sweep action.
Mr. Harbison, one of the things that I, that I always get is that there are people who say that there, there are individuals who have had cars parked in their yards for five, six, seven, and eight years, and that nothing has been done about it. And then yet, their car may have been there for maybe a week or two. So, you know, how do I, when somebody asks that question, I know I can direct it to you.
Absolutely.
But, you know, in my, for my information and my thinking, what should I?
Well, and, and just actually being involved in sending those letters for the last 29 years, I can't ever remember a time where property owner called and said, "Thanks for that letter." So generally, it's, it's received in a negative way. And a lot of times, there's some truth to what you've just described. But when we sweep an area, we may be hitting a property owner that's only had a vehicle there for a couple of months. I know growing up, we had an old abandoned vehicle in the backyard. We finally got tired of cutting the grass around it. We got rid of it. A lot of people have those situations. Unfortunately, in a sweep, we're going lot by lot, not necessarily who's had the problem the longest. And so you're gonna get some of those. That's, that's unfortunate, but it's the nature of the business.
Yeah, okay. So District 1, if you didn't hear, I'm telling you again, they're gonna do a nuisance sweep, so clean up your property. Get all the sofas off the, off the front porch. We'll now have remarks by the mayor and council. I'll start to my right this time.
The reason we've done that, we have so many complaints. Our city is too nice and got too many good things going to leave it junked up all the time. And you know, you don't have to be a millionaire to keep your grass cut and keep your car moving, whatever. And a lot of them in the council have said some things to me as well. I'm not blaming them, but I agree with them. And so we're gonna be doing the sweeps. So coming soon to your neighborhood, so get ready. And let's make this place look like it's supposed to, and it helps to improve the values of everybody's property when we do this. Thank you.
Councilman William.
I'll have it done.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of things. I just want to let people know and encourage them to go out and vote today. Today is the primary day, Super Tuesday, so please go out and vote. I also want to recognize we have the SCLC president in the audience, Ms. Marcia Kendrick. Thank you for being here, and all the usual people too that's here. And then I want to announce that we're gonna have a District 3 community meeting this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Carver, at the cafeteria. And then we also want to talk about, let me say that again, District 3 community meeting this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So please come if you have any complaints or anything that's going on, please come and voice your opinion and your complaint, because if I don't know about it, if we don't know about it, we can't begin to try to fix it. So that's the 20, that's this Thursday. So then also want to talk about RAM, the Remote Area Medical. It will be here the 28th and 29th, the Gaston City High School. That's free healthcare, screening, dental, and eyeglasses. They will make us pair eyeglasses on the spot. So please, we want to make sure everybody knew about it, because we don't want people saying that they didn't know. So we got billboards out. They have, they be running TV commercials, radio ads, so we're trying to get the word out to everybody. And also, I was briefed with EMA about this coronavirus. So I'm gonna just tell you what we were told is we in a hot zone for the flu and hepatitis A. So and it's the same protocol for the flu virus, you know, wash your hands. Hygiene, that's, that's what it's all about. Don't touch your face with your hands. Make sure your hands are sanitized. Wipe down your door handles at, at your place of work and at home. And if you're sick, by all means, stay at the house, so you won't give the flu or anything to anyone else. So if you have any questions, you can call me, and I'll be more than happy to tell you a little bit more. Okay? Thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pass on some information. We had a community development block grant meeting this morning, and one thing that came out of that meeting was there is a need for construction companies that can, that are qualified to do the work to receive these federal funds to help citizens that qualify for this funding. I think there's two companies right now that are qualified, and we need about two more. So if you're listening out there, and if you know of somebody that has a construction company that's willing to go through the process, please contact Renee Baker at City Hall. And there's a, there's a lot, there's a waiting list, and so we, we need some help. Along that same lines, there's a lot of, as was discussed this morning, widow ladies that live in a lot of these houses that are on a very small fixed income. And what happens is, is that their inability to afford to maybe fix small things lead to really big things. And so if you're out there listening, and if you have a church or a program where you have men and women that are handy men or handy women that can do small repairs, again, you are greatly needed in our community of helping take care of those that may not can help themselves. So contact, again, contact any of the council members, contact City Hall, contact Renee Baker. There's a lot of people that could use your help, and probably wouldn't take somebody that really knows what they're doing very much time to really do a great service for their fellow citizen. And that leads me into the public, we just had a public hearing on demolitions. There were five properties, so it's around $16,000 of your tax dollars, our tax dollars, that has been expended to tear down dilapidated buildings and door houses. And it And it goes back to what I'm talking about from the very beginning. Had someone been there to take care of some small leak or some small problem 10 years ago, maybe we don't have to tear that house down. Maybe that house could be a home for a family and could be rented, and somebody could be living there, and we wouldn't have to spend $15,000, $16,000 every week to tear down those houses of your taxpayer money. We could take those tax dollars and reinvest them into our city in a more productive way. I know right now, we're all hearing about potholes. It's amazing how in the winter, and then when the rain comes, the next thing you know, you have potholes. It's been that way since the invention of asphalt, just in case anybody's wondering. Happens every year. It's just a natural phenomenon. And so we could maybe fix more potholes, pave more streets if we weren't spending tax dollars to tear down houses that shouldn't be torn down to begin with. Does all that make sense? Please don't take this as preaching. I mean, I'm talking to myself just as much as I'm talking to anybody else. But stop and think about this for just a minute, of this process of how do we get to where we just spent $16,000 in one week to tear down houses? It all starts because they weren't properly kept up. Maybe they couldn't afford to. If people would help, then maybe that would stop that process. Okay, next thing is drainage. We talked again this morning. A lot of people like to rake their yards and put their debris for the city to pick up at the street. And for some reason, they like to put it right where the water drains into the public drainage. And then the rain comes, and all that is washed down into that hole where the water's supposed to go. But now, all of a sudden, it's blocked up with leaves and sticks and furniture and stuff like that. And then we get a call that there's flooding in my neighborhood. If you wouldn't have put your debris in front of where the water drains down, there's a good chance there wouldn't be any flooding. So don't put your debris near where the drain is. It's just common sense. Put it at the other end of your yard. Put it at the other end of the street. Put it across the street. Put it anywhere, but don't put it where there's a drain. Please. It costs a lot of money. Again, that's your tax dollars that the mayor and the public works is having to spend to go fix a problem that's totally unnecessary. And that, my friends, is all I have today. Thank you. How was that? That was fun. I feel better already.
Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Good. Trash, debris, old cars, old washing machines, sofas on your front porch, junk in your yard, it looks like it should be in a junkyard. If you want to blame anybody in District 6 for all this stuff trying to get taken care of, don't blame the mayor or Mr. Harbison. Blame me. I'm tired of living in all that over there. We've got to get our streets in order. We've got to quit putting stuff out right after the trash truck comes by. I'm watching a lady now that has a half a load of stuff about every other week. And they've talked to her, and she said, oh, she's cleaned her house out. For a year and a half, she couldn't get that much out of her house. There's no way. They're bringing that stuff in. They're bringing it in from other cities, just dumping it in, and she's letting them dump there. I don't know what's going on, but we're going to finally get to the end of that, and we're going to try to clean up Walnut Park, Alabama City, and South Gadsden and Oak Park. Those people over there are hardworking people, some of them, and they need a clean, decent place to live over there. And if you want to blame anybody, blame me, call me. I'll come to your house and talk to you. I'll show you all your troubles that you have in your yard. Just because you've got a car and it's 30 years old, it don't have a tag on it, it don't run, that's a nuisance right there. Get rid of it. Either that or fix it up and start driving it. The next thing I want to talk about is the Gaston Truth. How many people here knows about the Gaston Truth? Raise your hand. So if y'all don't know about it, I'm going to enlighten you about the Gaston Truth. I was at home last week, and I got a zillion calls, and I mean a zillion. They had on there that this council last week approved $6.5 million to purchase Canterbury Station to put a VNU2 in Canterbury Station. And there was all kind of comments. I got people from churches calling me, the neighborhoods calling me. The city of Gaston did not buy Canterbury Station. We have no desire to buy Canterbury Station. We don't have $6.2 million to buy it if it was for sale, and we don't have another $50 million to put in that complex to build something like that. All that is false. The Gaston Truth is not true. And you can tell the person, the man that's doing it, that Councilman Cannon says what he put on there was not true. I do know where Bailey Hill was, though. That might be the only thing truth he said about me. I do know where Bailey Hill is. I've been over there 61 years, and I know all about Bailey Hill. We just got, well, we just got to be truthful and just don't get the citizens of Gaston stirred up. Another person I've seen on the internet bragging he's going to run for, I'm pretty sure it's mayor of the city of Gaston. He's going to do away with the occupational tax, the 2% tax. He's going to fix every road in Gaston. He's going to take sales tax off of groceries. The homeless people is going to eat good. I can go on and on and on. Election's two years, a little over two years off. If you want to run for an office, come up here and understand about your government, how it works. If you're at the mayor's sermon guide and sitting there, he doesn't have a vote. He can't take sales tax off groceries. He can't do away with your occupational tax, and none of that stuff. If you're going to run for an office, make sure you know what you're running for, and come up here and sit in this council chambers and listen. You might learn something instead of just getting on the internet, telling everybody what you're going to do and how you're going to do it. You don't have a clue. And I repeat, the person that's putting office on don't have a clue what's going on up here. And I'm going to get off my soap opera and turn it over to Ben.
You didn't give him your phone number?
If they need my phone number, they can call the clerk's office. They can give them to them. It's no problem at all.
All right. Councilman Reed, do you have anything to say?
I'm a little dumbfounded. I was just sitting here trying to think of something to say. I do know this, that if you don't come up here and you don't see what goes on, the most, well, the person who's really in bad shape is one who's uninformed. He really doesn't know what he's saying. A liar, you can pick out pretty quick like he just did. But if you're totally misinformed, then you believe what you're saying. That's the man you got to worry about, because he truly is. So I agree with you. They should come up here.
Y'all do too much Facebook.
Yeah, and you have too much Facebook. I'm getting off of it right after this.
But really, I had a lot of problems about that. And normally, when you have a rumor, you don't get that many people calling and asking you about it, is it true? And then even this morning, when I went to vote, people were stopping and asking me. So I'm glad he brought that up.
Well, sure, that's part of it. It's a little different when you're up here looking out as it is when you're out there looking in, and then you don't know the facts. So, anyway.
That guy's going to have a thousand new followers in about 20 minutes.
Exactly. I just say, you need to stay.
Well, the biggest thing I got this morning is you have the opportunity to vote. Somebody either died for you right to it, or they worked for it. So get out there and vote. Do something. Don't sit on your hands.
That's right. That's the main thing. Registering the vote is fine, but you got to get up and go out there to the polls, and you've got to vote. And as I said last week, you know, don't take, don't take a ballot word for it. You can check out these people yourself, since everybody like to go to the internet. But you can find out, does these people represent your interests? And you vote your conviction. Due to the National League of Cities Conference next week, there will not be a city council meeting or work session on Tuesday, March 10th, but we will, we will meet on March 17th. Also, District 1 will have a meeting, and I will be announcing it March 23rd at the Anyark Family Life Center at 6:00 p.m. Was that Mr. Duramus? Do I have to remove you?
Yeah. Take him out.
Council President, if I may, I would, there is a good picture of the city council on the Gaston Truth, and especially right up underneath it, you'll see one of the other councilmen, only Councilman Wilson, you might just want to look at that.
That boy's been after me for, well before I became a city councilman. I'm not, we're trying to listen to that voice.
Madam President, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact of a couple of weeks ago, we had a statewide mountain bike, I guess tournament or contest here in Gaston up at Nakalula Falls. So a great thank you to the mayor's office, to Jen Weddington and her staff. 600 high school students came and participated over Saturday and Sunday. They brought along with them in between 2,000 to 3,000 family members. And they came to Gaston, and a lot of them came to Gaston for the first time. And I heard some really, really good reports on Nakalula Falls, on the city of Gaston. So we're up here kind of, I'm talking about drainage and doing right, but y'all, there's some really great things going on in our city. And along with that, there was a group called Friends of the Falls, which is part of helping to bring that on. If you're not in the group Friends of the Falls, you need to be in that group Friends of the Falls. It's a group of real positive-thinking people. They're helping Nakalula Falls on a consistent basis, volunteering. They also help the neighborhood. They had a big trash pickup this weekend, and I think they picked up between 100 and 150 black garbage bags of trash on the side of the mountain. And it's just a great group of people. But the Falls, the investment that the city has made over the last, what, five to 10 years, mayor, on those trails and the things that are up there, is really paying dividends. That's a lot of people come to our town, and they spend a lot of money. They had to eat, they had to buy gas. A lot of them came, had to stay overnight, one or two nights. It was a nice little boost for our local economy. There was the national director of that association was here, fell in love with Nakalula Falls, wants to do some other things up there. And the state director said, you know, we'll be back next year. So really, really positive things happened up at Nakalula Falls. And just thank you to Friends of the Falls for being a large part of making that happen.
Councilman Cannon and Councilman Reed, in our community, in the black community, we don't call it the Gaston Truth. We say the Street Committee. So when the Street Committee speaks, we know how far to take it and how far not to take it.
Could I say one thing? I'm sorry I didn't let Councilman Cannon know that we're moving the venue over to Alabama City, so.
Please don't get that started.
And the other thing is, if you double on any police, or any roads, or any trash pickup, or anything else, then be sure whoever gets to run for mayor takes all those issues off the table that that guy was talking about.
Yeah, everybody's going to pave all the roads in Gaston and do away with all the taxes. And I guess when they do away with all the taxes that they're trying to do away with, the people said they're going to run on, I guess the city won't exist.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.